Conducted virtually by Zoom webinar and is being livestreamed on the City of Milton's Facebook page. Please note, the only active videos and microphones will be that of our panelists, which includes the mayor, council members, and city staff. All attendee videos will be disabled and will remain disabled for the duration of the meeting. All microphones will be muted except for the mayor's call for public comment. At that time only, and when notified, the moderator will unmute your microphones to allow you to speak. Attendees joining the meeting who wish to make a public comment may do so by using the raise hand feature. For Zoom app users by computer, tablet, and smartphone, the raise hand feature is located at the bottom of your screen. Click Raise Hand. Callers using telephones can access the raise hand feature by using the phone keypad. To raise your hand, press star nine. To unmute, press star six. Please do not use the Raise Your Hand feature until the mayor calls for and announces the appropriate time for public comment. The Q and A function found at the bottom of your screen can be used for procedural questions regarding the Zoom app only. Chat with panelists and other questions are prohibited for tonight's meeting. The meeting will now begin. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Thank you, Stacy. I'd like to call the virtual meeting, the virtual regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, April 27, 2020, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully. And if you wish to comment on any item on the agenda, then you may do so by public comment. There will be two opportunities for public comment on tonight's agenda. One will be at the beginning during general public comment. And then the second opportunity will be during new business on the agenda item. The moderator will provide public comment instructions at that time. While the Milton Rules allows the speaker to request to make a comment up until the clerk calls the agenda item. Once the agenda item is called, no other comment request will be accepted. Sudi, if you would please call the role for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll be happy to call roll for the April 27, 2020 regular meeting. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson?
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick?
Here.
For the record, councilmembers Moore and Cokerly are absent. And now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, Sudi, and want to welcome everybody here tonight, even though we are virtual. Glad you're here, if you're on with us, and thanks to the council and our staff. Our next item will be our meeting agenda. Sudi, if you'd please call the agenda.
Next item is approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 20114.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting agenda as prepared.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, and I believe a second from Councilmember Bentley. Councilmember Morick, it was close there, but I think the computer lit up with Bentley, so I'll... A motion from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Bentley for approval of the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. I'm going to ask you individually. Councilmember Bentley?
Aye.
And Councilmember Longoria?
Aye.
Councilmember Jameson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Morick?
Aye.
Okay, and myself. That's unanimous, Sudi. All right, our next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. As a reminder, there will be two opportunities for public comment, the first of which is general public comment. If you wish to make a general public comment, then please use the raise hand feature located at the bottom of your screen now. If you're using the telephone, press star nine to raise your hand. As a reminder, when your name is called, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes for remarks. Stacy, is there any general public comment this evening?
I don't have any raising their hand for general public comment, but I believe we had one that was emailed to us that, Sudi, you may have to ask Attorney Gerard about whether or not we can read that, because I don't see that gentleman.
Stacy?
I think that's under the... That's...
That's in reference to an agenda item.
Agenda item, so that would be at the agenda item.
Okay, sorry about that, sir. We don't have any public comment, general public comment.
Okay, all right. So we'll move on to our consent agenda. Sudi, if you'll please sound the consent agenda items.
First item is approval of the March 16, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 20115. Approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending February 2020. Agenda item number 20116. Approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Tenell Spangler Walsh and Associates, TSW, to conduct planning services and complete Milton's 2040 comprehensive plan. Agenda item number 20117. Approval of a construction services agreement with Pavement Technology, Inc. for the application of pavement preservation treatments of various locations around the city. Agenda item number 20118. Our fifth item is approval of a construction services agreement with Blunt Construction Company, Inc., for the excavation and repair of a sinkhole located in the right-of-way at 511 Harmony Court in Avensong subdivision. Agenda item number 20119. Approval of a facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Mill Springs Academy to provide gymnasium access to support the City of Milton basketball program. Agenda item number 20120. Approval of a facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Mill Springs Academy to provide school access to support the City of Milton Camp Joyful Souls Summer Camp. Agenda item number 20121. Our eighth and our final consent agenda item is approval of a behavioral services contract between the City of Milton and Comprehensive Behavior Change LLC to provide training services for the counselors at Camp Joyful Souls. Agenda item number 20122.
Okay, thank you, Sudi. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by the city clerk.
Second?
Okay, I've got a motion for approval of the consent agenda from Councilmember Bentley, and I've got a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye, and I'm going to ask individually. So Councilmember Bentley?
Aye.
Councilmember Longoria?
Aye.
Councilmember Jameson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morick?
Aye.
And then also, aye, approval from myself. All right, so, Sudi, that is unanimous with all those present. All right, so we'll move on to first presentation. Sudi, if you'll please sound the first presentation item.
This is consideration of the adoption of the proposed changes to Chapter 32 and Chapter 34 of the Milton City Code, agenda item number 20123.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion on the first presentation item.
Mayor, I move that we accept the first presentation item as read.
Second?
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye, and again, I'll ask individually. Councilmember Bentley?
Aye.
Councilmember Longoria?
Aye.
Councilmember Jameson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morick?
Aye.
And aye, myself, for approval. So, Sudi, that was unanimous, so... All right, we have no items under public hearing, zoning agenda, or unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. This is also, as I read earlier, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If you wish to comment on any new business item, please note there are two. Then please use the raise hand feature before the item is read. So, Sudi, if you'd please read the item, excuse me.
This is consideration for approval of a project agreement between the City of Milton and the St. Georgia Department of Natural Resources for the construction of a fishing pier at the pavilion at Providence Park. Agenda item number 20124, Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, mayor and council. Want to first start letting you know, this is the second half of a process that started back in 2018. At that time, we went to council and asked you to please approve a request to submit a grant application to the Department, State of Georgia Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund. That grant request was approved by the council on October 22, 2018. I am most pleased to announce tonight that on March 25, we received the formal notification that our grant proposal was approved by the Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is acting as the agent from the National Park Service, federal government. So tonight, what I am asking of the council is to approve the acceptance of the grant. And Dave, if we can go to the next slide, please? Thank you, Dave. Some of you may recall this design. This is a conceptual drawing from the approved master plan of Providence Park. And in the upper left-hand corner, you can see a depiction of a fishing pier out over the city-owned portion of the lake at Lake Providence. For a little bit of history, excuse me, for a little bit of history, there was a small... Goodness, I'm sorry, a small fishing dock. And back in 2015, when we took ownership of the park, we did an analysis of that fishing dock and determined that it failed a structural integrity test, and we removed it, working with the Soil and Water Conservation District. So they are where we have always intended to put something back over the lake. So, David, if you could go to the next slide, please? Thank you, David. So what we have here is a concept drawing of what we could do with this fishing pier. And, you know, in the upper left, you see a concept drawn by our city architect, Bob Bishemi, and then a couple of other drawings. I took, in the lower-left corner, there's an actual picture of the view from where this fishing pier would be. The next picture is obviously not the lake, but it is a picture of a fishing pier going out over water. What we have envisioned here is a wooden boardwalk that would connect to the trail that is currently a project that is partially funded by a grant from the Department of Natural Resources Recreation Trail Grant Program. And so we're talking a wooden boardwalk that would be over the lake. Keep in mind, please, that the lake itself is a stormwater retention area, so the water can get quite high based upon stormwater. And so we're still working on the process of exactly what height it would be relative to ADA accessibility as well as stormwater management. But the idea here is we applied for the maximum grant we could get. And in applying for the maximum grant, which is $100,000, the city, back in 2018, approved, applying for $100,000, saying that we would match it with $100,000, which means a total budget of $200,000 for the boardwalk and the fishing pier and the pavilion we wish to build over it. Should that not come to $200,000, we have the option to, of course, spend less and spend what's appropriate for that. We would simply not get exactly $100,000. So, for example, let's say this project comes to $150,000 when complete. Given the 50-50 share, in this case, DNR would reimburse the city for $75,000, and the city would be responsible for $75,000. But in applying for the grant, we made the decision to go for the maximum amount possible, and thus, we have the $200,000 proposal. If there's any questions, I would be most happy to answer them at this time.
Jim, I just, I want to clarify. So what you just said, obviously, if, you know, we've applied for the maximum, if we spend less, then it's less on both sides, the grant as well as the city's exposure. Also, timing, what's the timing? Let's say we get started, and as you say, you know, we've still got some planning and all to see with elevations and whatnot, what we can do. Does that give us some leeway? Let's just say, again, we're in an unprecedented situation right now with the virus and whatnot. Does that give us some flexibility as they start doing final design and working together? You know, if we needed to, let's just say, you know, try to trim the budget a little bit, does that give us the option to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I have two answers for you to that question. First of all, is that the contract that is requested by the Department of Natural Resources requests that we complete this project by December 31, 2021. Second of all, in recognizing that we were likely to get this grant, recently, the city went through a public request for proposal process to seek a design architecture firm for the restrooms, which were approved in a previous Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, as well as a small boardwalk over at a ephemeral stream as part of the Recreation Trail Grant, as well as this particular fishing pier. The concept being to get a design firm that could handle all three pieces and keep them aesthetically similar and architecturally identical to maintain what we're trying to do with Providence Park. But each one is separately budgeted and would be invoiced separately. So what we've done here is we've already gotten a leg up on this work in that, at this point in time, we've done the public bidding process for the architectural design. We have been through the vetting process, we had multiple respondents, and we are in the process of working a contract, and we'll be bringing a contract to council probably in the next month for the fishing pier, as well as the boardwalk of the ephemeral stream, as well as the bathrooms, the restrooms at the park. So we've been working to get ahead of this project, but we also do have until 2021 to finish this fishing pier. Does it answer your question, sir?
Um, that does, but just to clarify that, and basically, you know, the bids you're looking for now are designed. So, again, I'm just saying, if in the next three months, six months, and we needed to tighten some things up, there... What I see is there's opportunity to do that as far as with the design itself, correct?
Mr. Mayor, last time I gave you a long answer, this time I'll give you a short one. Yes, we have some flexibility on the time schedule here.
Okay, thank you. We'll open up council, any questions for Jim on this?
I have a question.
Sure.
So after, when the contract comes back in, we'll get to see the design of these different structures, is that right, Jim?
Absolutely. The next step in this process, working under the assumption that you folks approve this particular agreement with the DNR, the next step would be the approval of a contract with the architectural firm. That architectural firm would be working with the staff to come up with designs, and we would be taking these designs to council to make sure that they are in line with the wants and goals of the city.
Okay, great, yeah, that's important to me, just to see how this all ties together and has the same look and feel, and that we make sure that what we put back in Providence Park is in the same, you know, keeping. It's going to be nicer, of course, but, you know, we're restoring it to its original glory, and, you know, there are neighbors all around and across the lake and things like that. So I'd like another, you know, chance, as you were saying we will, to be able to look at the design and review it.
Councilmember Bentley, I could not agree with you more. It is important that we have an integrated design here that matches the overall beauty that we're trying to maintain here at Providence. This is one of the reasons we had the strategy of having one architectural firm design all three key components so we can maintain the cohesiveness of the design. And absolutely, I'm looking forward to the day I can bring these designs to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I'm going to open up to public comment. I know Stacy said you may have one to read into the record.
Yes, sir, I believe Sudi has that available to read, but I do not see the gentleman in our attendee listing, so we may have to ask Ken Gerard for his opinion on this.
Can you give us the opinion at Facebook? Can we tell if he's on Facebook?
Yeah, that's right, that's the thing. I mean, I think in this unusual time, particularly since people could be observing remotely on Facebook, and I don't know that we would necessarily know if they are, but that's the equivalent of the live attendance. Mr. Mayor, my recommendation would be to allow it, go ahead and get read in.
And what, say that again, Ken, your recommendation to what?
Go ahead and let it get read in, and whether or not we're able to verify they are physically watching. I think we can assume they are, and candidly, I think, given the interesting time we're in, I think it's fine.
Okay, all right, Stacy, if you'd, well, let me ask, do you have any other public comment besides the one that's requested to be read in?
No, sir, that's the only one.
Okay, if you would, please read the public comment.
I'll read that in. It's from Gary Jablonsky at 2680 Grassview Drive, Milton, Georgia. He says, "As I read the packet, the city has a water conservation fund grant of $100,000. The grant requires the city to provide a 50% match, which is budgeted for FY 2020. I am in favor of constructing the pier at Providence Park. It would be a shame if the city could not capitalize on the grant. With the COVID-19 virus affecting the entire city, perhaps revenues are lower than expected. I recommend the council take a careful look at revenue and assets, determine if it is still prudent to approve the expenditure or otherwise use available funds for higher priority items." And that's the end.
Okay. With that, is there any other questions? Comments? I'll close the public hearing in any other discussion with council. All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 20-124.
Second?
All right, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye, and I'll ask individually. Councilmember Bentley?
Aye.
Councilmember Longoria?
Aye.
Councilmember Jameson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morick?
Aye.
And aye for myself, so that passes unanimously, Sudi. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
It's my pleasure, thank you very much.
Okay, before we move into staff reports, is there anything that council would like to report on or any comments or observations? I'll go ahead and start. You know, it's been an interest, obviously, it's been an interesting time. We're all kind of wading through, you know, the current situation. We do feel like the City of Milton is in a better position than some of our other cities, just, you know, based on our tax base and things like that. But, again, it's been trying, but, again, our, give credit to our staff, everybody that's working hard from, you know, either remotely or public safety, and the guys out there that are performing the essential services, so, as well as all their backup. So that seems to be going fairly well, haven't had too many issues. So, again, with that, I'll love to open it up to council with any other observations or concerns or, you know, things that they're seeing, if they'd like to share those. Okay? I'll take that as a no, so... Then I'll, we'll open up the staff reports, so we'll start with community development.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm Parag Agarwal, City's Community Development Director. Today, I am participating in my first virtual city council meeting, so I will try my best, so please let me know if my voice is breaking up or something. So last month, in spite of the shelter-in-place...
Parag, excuse me, your voice is breaking up.
Okay.
No, I'm kidding, go ahead, you're doing fine.
So last month, in spite of the shelter-in-place policies, the operations of the department moved on quite well, and we continue to serve the Milton residents. As you know, many of the department operations cannot be conducted from a home, like inspections, permitting, court enforcement. So many of the department employees were coming to the office every day, and they were maintaining their social distancing and were following other public health guidelines. In the last one month, our community has not seen any slowdown in the construction activity. You see a lot of vertical construction going on in the Crab Apple area, and very soon, the City of Milton will be getting a new downtown. So in the first slide, we have our department numbers, and these numbers are from March 15 to April 15. So if you look at the first bullet point, the department reviewed around 93 new permit applications. So whenever there's a new permit submitted, you have to go through a zoning, architecture, arborist, soil erosion, and stormwater review. So total of 93 planned summits were reviewed. So 20 business days, around four to five planned summits were reviewed every day. Around 122 building permits were issued, which included single-family, commercial, mechanical, and other permits. Total of 559 building inspections were conducted. The city has one land inspector, and Josh Rogers basically inspected around 515 sites last month, and around 42 tree removal permits were issued. And these numbers are, on average, on the higher side. So you can see, again, as I mentioned, the construction activity in Milton has not slowed down. David, if you can change the next slide?
Parag, can I break in, excuse me, one second? And the only thing I would say that, you know, for council and those listening, I'm going, this is just an assumption, but the construction hasn't slowed down, but we just need to be prepared that, you know, from a budgeting standpoint, that certainly, it could in the future. I'm sure most of the stuff that's going on right now was pre-planned, and it already had begun, so just for a point of clarification there.
Yes, mayor.
Thanks.
Talking about the major projects, the city very soon will be launching the 2040 comprehensive plan update. The city council approved the contract today with the consulting. Last week, I sent out an email to the city council members requesting their appointees to the CPAC, and we are planning to launch the comprehensive plan process in the month of May. So initially, we were planning to have a project launch meeting or something, but we will be having a virtual meeting in the month of May. So please give me your names of the appointees on the CPAC. Second update is of the trail master plan. The city has received the final draft of the trail master plan, and we will... and we will be presenting this master plan to the city council on May eighteenth. We will be sharing this master plan with the Trail Advisory Committee members and also with the Milton residents before May eighteenth meeting. This, the draft master plan has been presented to the city council a few times in the past also, and the Trail Advisory Committee and the entire community of the City of Milton has been very active and very supportive of this new trail master plan update. Talking about the tree preservation ordinance, the, the staff has incorporated the feedback which we received from the city council when we last presented through this preservation ordinance to the city council. Right now, the tree preservation ordinance is being reviewed by the, by the city attorneys, and we have scheduled to present this to the city council on May eighteenth. David, if you can change the slide? Yes. The last slide, which I have, is about the update of the board meetings. As you know, there was some pause at the various board meetings. So our department staffs four committees, the Planning Commission, Design Review Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Green Space Advisory Committee. We are planning to relaunch these meetings in the month of June. We, and, and in May. We have been working very closely with the board members, with the chairs and the vice chairs of these boards, and we are also working very closely with the applicants, who will be submitting their projects for their, for the review of these boards. So the Planning Commission meeting is being scheduled for June twenty-fourth. The DRB meeting is for June second. The BZA June sixteen, and the Green Space Advisory Committee meeting will be on May eighteen. Whether these meetings will be virtual or in person, that depends upon the guidance which we will receive from City Attorney's Office and also from our public health guidance from the state. But we are planning to schedule these, most likely, these will be virtual, but it depends. So that's, do you want to change the slide, David? Thank you, so here you are. So any questions from, for the department mayor?
Um, well, Prag, of course, I just want to thank you for, I've gotten lots of good feedback and comments from people that they've been able to, you know, continue on, that you have been able to, with your department and staff, to continue work, you know, continue working, even though virtual, or coming up with ways to, to adapt. So I think a lot of other cities have not, have not done that. So kudos to you and your staff on that. And, and then again, just to confirm, I was just, just kidding when I said you're, you were breaking up. You sounded fine on there, so.
Happens, happens all the time in these.
Kidding, I was just making light a little bit. Anybody else have questions or comments for Prag? Okay, thank you, Prag.
Thank you.
We'll move on to finance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope you can hear me.
Yep, sound good.
Perfect. I am happy to report that Finance was able to wrap up our annual reporting as we transitioned to the current telecommuting and in-office hybrid work schedule. So the fiscal year two thousand nineteen comprehensive annual finance report, as well as the popular annual finance report, can be found on the city's finance, the finance page of the city's website. I want to send a big thank you to all of the staff for their help gathering the data, and specifically to our graphic designer, Lori Kernan, and our communications director, Greg Bithello, for their support throughout the process. Without them, we may not have met that deadline, so I'm very thankful. We hope these documents give Milton stakeholders a better understanding of the city's finances and accomplishments over the past fiscal year. Bringing everything to date, just to remind everyone, the occupational tax certificate renewal deadline was extended to May nineteenth, twenty twenty, with council's approval of the recent emergency ordinances. To date, approximately sixty percent of the current active businesses have renewed their licenses, compared to approximately around seventy-five percent this time in the past two years. So we're not doing too bad. Finance is currently seeking a revenue coordinator, and we hope to fill this position soon. In the meantime, responsibilities for the front desk have been addressed by our current part-time revenue specialist with the help of our accounting manager. And again, the entire finance staff is rotating on a hybrid model of telecommuting and in-office hours, so all mail and paperwork dropped off in the lobby and delivered by the postal services, being addressed in a timely manner. We also have the phones rotating amongst staff, so all calls are answered by someone throughout business hours, and voicemails are being checked multiple times throughout the day, so with the goal of same-day turnaround. We are currently working through the budget amendment process and plan to have that before council for a public hearing at the end of May. Official notice will be advertised in the Milton Herald once the details have been finalized. And lastly, I just want to remind all the citizens to complete their census forms. Milton shares this revenue for local option sales tax and transportation local option sales tax, and our, those are, local option sales tax is our second-largest revenue stream, and we're relying upon those responses for our share of the ratio for that distribution. Currently, about thirty-one percent of twenty-twenty's original budget projections was based on local option sales tax alone. So I just want to remind everyone to please complete their census. And that's it for Finance this evening.
Okay, there any questions for Bernard? No, we just, and we appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know with our current and future budgeting, you, you guys got to keep a close track on that, so with everything we're going through. So thank you.
Our pleasure.
All right, we'll move on to economic development. Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to announce that the Bronze Horse was installed in the Charlotte Drive Roundabout today. For those unfamiliar with the project, this was a dream of our late Arborist Mark Law. To honor his memory, his family, through the Milton Arts Council, raised more than eleven thousand dollars from a hundred and five donors to fund her. The Arts Council is proud to be able to contribute a public art installation at no cost to the city, and we want to thank Christine Law and their boys for this generous offer, and are pleased to be able to honor Mark Law in this way. Once we are able to gather again, we will have a formal celebration. Also wanted to tell council about the North Fulton COVID-nineteen Business Impact Survey. Along with my fellow North Fulton Economic Development professionals, we jointly conducted this survey a couple weeks ago. We had over eight hundred people respond, thirty-nine of them identifying as Milton businesses. We are hoping that by issuing this survey together, we will catch a full glimpse of the environment in order to keep our elected officials informed and to help us share needed resources. I have a lot of slides I could show you, and will be happy to share all of the data, but wanted to focus on four slides in particular tonight. The first being slide four, which shows, this is for all of the respondents, that whole eight hundred. I'm showing that sixty percent of businesses are operational. In Milton, that number is fifty-one percent of the thirty-nine that responded. The next is slide eight, which talks about employment count. For Milton responses, fourteen percent of our businesses reported having hired new employees, and while the remaining eighty percent noted that they temporarily, temporarily laid off or hurloughed employees, zero stated that they had permanently laid off employees. The next is slide thirteen, which talks about the confusion and concern businesses have about the ability to reopen. Milton mirror, or pretty much mirrors this whole North Fulton with a third saying yes, a third saying no, and a third being unsure. And the last slide is, talks about the future and their concerns moving forward. Milton has the same top three as all of North Fulton, which is the, there being a recession, the decreased consumer confidence, and the financial impact on the operations. We will continue to issue this survey, this, we put it out there as version one. So we will continue to issue this survey as the situation evolves, and I will share those results with you, with city council accordingly. Were there any questions regarding the survey?
Any questions? Comments? Okay.
Okay, and then we're just, we're keeping in touch with our businesses. We send out at least once a week a business update. We are conducting our quarter conversations virtually. Our first one was our highest attended ever. We're having another one this Thursday, and we're looking at doing our Small Business Symposium this June virtually as well. So if there's nothing else, thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you, Sarah. So is there anything else that council staff would like to say or report on? I appreciate everybody attending tonight. And that'll conclude our regular meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye, and-
Aye.
Councilmember Bentley, Councilmember Longoria?
Aye.
Councilmember Jamison?
Aye.
Councilmember Maury?
Aye.
As well as myself, so that, that is unanimous. So thank you, everybody, for attending tonight.
Thank you.